You ready? Everybody ready to roll?
Good afternoon. Welcome to the last Planning Commission meeting of 2016. Got a good crowd. We will call to order the December City of Columbia Planning Commission meeting. I'd like to welcome all Planning Commission members, staff, and guests. At this time, I'd like everyone to please turn their cell phones and PDA's to the silent or vibrant, vibrate mode. The administrator will now proceed with the roll call.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. Frost? Ms. James? Mr. Stern?
Here.
Mr. Stegemeier? Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Tupper? And Mr. Waits? We have four of them.
Thank you. I'd like to briefly review the meeting format. Applicants with requests before the Planning Commission are allotted, allotted a presentation time of 10 minutes. This time should include but is not limited to an overview of the project, case history, and any pertinent meetings held regarding the request. This time also includes all persons presenting information on behalf of the applicants such as attorneys, engineers, and architects. This time limit does not include any questions asked by the Planning Commission or staff regarding these requests. Members of the general public are given the opportunity to address their concerns in intervals of two minutes. The administrator has a timer and will make presenters aware of when their time has expired. The Planning Commission reserves the right to amend these procedures on a case-by-case basis. The consent agenda. The Planning Commission uses the consent agenda to approve non-controversial or routine matters by a single motion and vote. Examples of such items include approval of site plans, annexations, and street names. If a member of the Planning Commission or general public would like to discuss an item on the consent agenda, then that item is removed from the consent agenda and considered during the meeting. The Planning Commission then approves the remaining consent agenda items. The administrator will now read the consent agenda.
Our first item actually is the election of a vice chair.
Okay. Do we have a nomination for vice chairman? Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye. Anyone oppose? Congratulations, Brian. Now we'll proceed with the consent agenda.
Your consent, consent agenda this evening consists of the approval of the November 7th, 2016 minutes, a site plan review for 199 Shop Grove Road, annexation and comprehensive planned map amendments, and zoning map amendments for northwest-south Patton Circle, 5, 5, 5,800 Fairfield Road, South slash South Wood Creek Road formerly known as 10140 Cooper's Nursery Road, as well as the South slash South Jacobs Mill Pond Road. Zoning tax amendments for modifications to Chapter 17, Article 3 regarding the reduction of parking requirements for certain uses, a zoning tax amendment for Chapter 17, Article 3 for a change in definitions for dormitories regarding public use, and Chapter 17, Article 3 modifications to the table of permitted uses. And then two zoning map and tax amendments for, actually, items number 11 and 12 are actually being deferred, so those will be not part of your consent agenda. And that would consist of your consent agenda. I believe there are two people who need to recuse themselves from item three, so staff would suggest that we take item three separately in one motion with the two people recusing, and then we could pick up items four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, and 10 as a secondary consent agenda item.
All right, before we get to that, are there any commission members or guests today who wish to have any of the items on the consent agenda removed and placed on the regular agenda? Okay, so we're going to need two motions here. The first one, as John stated, two of us will recuse ourselves from it, so Mr. Stern, if you will.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Well, with the exception of item number three.
Actually, Mr. Taylor, Mr. Taylor and Mr. Cohen are accusing themselves, so since you're now the vice chair, you actually run the meeting, so you, you need to ask for a motion from any of the remaining members.
A motion for what?
A motion for approval or denial or whatever it might be for item number three.
I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now, now back to items four, five, six.
Now back to the remaining items on the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the remaining items on the consent agenda?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Remaining items on the consent agenda have been approved.
Your regular, your regular agenda this evening consists of a number of items. Number 13 is the next on your agenda, which is a zoning map amendment for 3319 Millwood Avenue, which is a request to recommend to rezone the parcel from a planned unit development commercial district, PUDC, to a single-family residential district, RS2. And we just wanted to let you just kind of clarify, make sure everybody realizes this is a rezoning, it is not a site plan review particular item, and so the, the topic of discussion this evening is about the rezoning of the parcel to that RS2 classification as the applicant has proposed, and the applicant is here if you'd like to hear from them.
Well, I'd like to also state before we start that anyone who approaches us to give their opinions, please state your name and please pay particular attention to the timers that will be there since we have a large crowd tonight, and if there's, there's a lot of repetitiveness, please limit that so we can, we can just get the facts. Let's proceed with the, any of the other commissioners have any questions? Any, any questions for staff to begin with before we bring the applicant up? I have several. Has this previously been approved by Richland County, or by the commission in Richland County? Is there, has there been an approval prior to this meeting tonight?
Regarding county, Richland County? Sure, you want to handle that or you want me to?
So just specifically speaking about the November 20, 2003 rezoning request, the school district did receive approval to rezone the Drear property and combining several other lots, there were a mixture of zoning districts, RS2, which was single-family, RG1, which is general residential, C1, which is office and institutional, C3 was general commercial. So it was a mixture of different properties that were acquired adjacent to the old Drear site, and because of the existing zoning that was there, the zoning ordinance at the time and still currently would not allow the development across different zoning district boundaries at that time, so the planned unit development was brought in 2003 and approved in 2003 with agreement that came before city council with the flood zoning that we have before us today. It was specifically tailored for the school district in the adjacent neighborhoods and again was approved at that point. The request before you today simply is a request to rezone the property to RS2, single-family residential. And I'll just say a little further that this rezoning request is just that, is a request for rezoning should the Planning Commission make a recommendation to city council to approve the request to RS2, and city council makes a vote to approve the request for rezoning to RS2, the school district would still have to go to the planning correction, to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a special exception request for any expansion, whether it be building or any type of athletic fields. So again, specifically before us today is not a site plan review of sorts, it's straight zoning, what can and cannot go in RS2 zoning, should you even plan to approve it. zoning, what can and cannot go in RS2 zoning, should you even plan to approve it.
Yes, there's a lot of specific points within the PUD document. Deal mostly with hours of operation, screening, be it fencing, landscaping, parking, all of the normal things that would be, you know, included in a site plan, but it goes above because it, it took in basically a residential street that was used, and they looked at that, combining the parcels. I believe originally we're looking at about 13 acres, and with the acquisition of additional properties, we ended up around 21 acres. But specifically, to your point, yes, there were a lot of specific requirements, again, relative to screening and noise and operation.
Any other questions? Or would the applicant like to come forward, please?
To, to go from PUDC to RS2, we were in fact originally intending to amend the PUD, to look at making these improvements without undoing a lot of the language of the PUD, but we were told that that was no longer appropriate, which is why we're going through the zoning process. It's also important to note, Craig, you had asked some questions about the history of how we got to that PUD and the specific requirements. Many of those requirements are not affected by this plan. Certainly landscape, screening, many of the big features of, of that PUD negotiation are still in effect. This is a very surgical improvement to the athletic facilities at Drear High School. That said, I'm not presenting that today. We understand that this process is step one, that step two, in addition to going before city council in a second reading, is to go before the Board of Zoning Appeals for the specifics of the plan, so we're not presenting those specifics tonight, although I'd be happy to answer any questions you have for them. It's also important to note that this is part of a district-wide effort to improve athletic facilities at high schools throughout the district, so Drear is not the only one, it just happens to be the one that's got some zoning issues that we need to resolve. These improvements include primarily a multipurpose synthetic turf field for practices, physical education, soccer, JV football games, as well as competition-level tennis courts on the site. So we currently have three, they're not competition-level, we're looking to reconfigure those and provide five courts. So again, the specifics of the improvements will be addressed with the Zoning Board of Appeals, but I'm happy to answer any questions you have. Before that, I think it's worth acknowledging we have a tremendous turnout of advocates for Drear High School. Thank you all. So I would encourage you all, if you're in support of this plan, to stand and be recognized. So hopefully they don't all speak, but... So I'll take any questions you have now.
What have you done in regards to lighting? You have a residential neighborhood around here, and I wondered why, if I'm looking at this correctly, it, it has a blue dot, and I rode, rode, I'm fairly familiar with Drear, both my children attended Drear, and I went by to look at the area again this weekend because I thought we might have a few people here tonight.
Right.
What have you done to protect the neighborhoods, the, the houses around it, and why wasn't the field put more towards Millwood instead of what I think it's in the back?
Well, that feels like a question that's very specific to the plan, so I do have backpocket plans if we need to distribute those to you, but I'll give you a simple answer. The planning of the location for the turf field does not impact the setback zones, the landscape buffers, or any of the screening features that were put in during the renovation in 2003, so none of those are impacted whatsoever. We have done site sections to demonstrate how much you can see of these improvements, even though most of it is two-dimensional. In other words, most of the money is being spent in the ground plane, converting a grass field to a turf field and doing improvements around the field specifically, nevertheless, there's very little that you will be able to see because of the existing screening that is in place. So all of that was taken into account.
What about the lighting for the tennis courts, and are there going to be any night football games, JV football games, or?
There, there will be, on occasion, the use of the lights. We expect that it would be limited to the earlier hours of the evening. In fact, that's being actively discussed, and we're looking to be as sensitive as we can be about the spillage of the lights on the field to the, the adjacent neighbors. And we have specific proposals in mind, options that we intend to review to accomplish that goal.
And what about traffic on the roads around the school?
Yeah, the traffic is not impacted at all, we're not changing any of the access to the site, it's all off of Millwood as it currently exists. There's a slight reconfiguration of the faculty parking lot to accommodate the field, and additional parking can be provided where we're taking up the old tennis courts, but none of the traffic will be impacted. Access remains off of Millwood, and we do not anticipate any additional load as far as traffic goes. I did not answer your question about orientation, we did study several locations. As it turns out, we, we think we have found the optimal location for orientation of the field, it needs to have a primarily north-south axis, and we've studied, at the request of those that are looking over our shoulder, other locations that just did not turn out to be very feasible.
So on Millwood to the left of the school, the parking lot that currently exists, that couldn't be used for the athletic facilities?
Not with, not without additional land acquisition.
Thank you. Any, any other questions?
I have, I have a question for, I don't know if it's for you or for staff, but typically when we look at a zoning change, we're asked to look at what it might allow rather than what the applicant may be asking us to, to look at. Here, it seems that it's somewhat different, because if we approve this zoning, we're going to get a specific project, and yet we don't know what that project looks like.
So to answer the first part of your question, so typically, what, what we direct you to do when you are looking at rezoning a particular property is to refer to the land use plan that's adopted by both Planning Commission and City Council through a public hearing process. The most recent comprehensive land use plan was adopted about a year and three-quarters ago, and that particular plan recommended a residential classification for this particular parcel that Drear is on. It has also, you can see on the map, some other residential as well as some commercial activity corridors along Millwood and Divine Street. And so the question there would be for Planning Commission to determine if, look at the plan as well as determine if those, that that's a particular, the appropriate use. In addition, we would direct you to look at the use table and look at all the different uses that are allowed, both principal uses as well as uses by special exception. A high school, these types of things are allowed by special exception in this proposed district, and so you would need to evaluate whether that's appropriate in that particular case.
Those are somewhat irrelevant in this case, because we know what, what is going to be developed if this is approved.
You know what they're proposing, so...
We don't know how, how it's going to be developed.
Right, I mean, because it's a school district, they're probably not going to be, you know, turning around and selling the property in three years or something like that, but whether this was, was the high school or if it's a law office, that, you know, we've had different people propose to rezone a residential structure to commercial or something like that. It's, it's still very similar. The applicant has something very specific, but you're, you need to look for the, the current as well as the long-term for this particular parcel. And in terms of the details, because of the types of facilities and the, any kind of expansion to the high school, those would have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals for the special exception. So if they decided not to do the athletic fields as they were being discussed, but they wanted to do a science wing to the building, they would still have to go, you know, there's that kind of thing. So over time, they would have to be going back to the Board of Appeals, so...
I could tag in too, Mr. Chairman, if it's okay. They did get the rezoning to RS2, and they went to the Board of Zoning Appeals. The Board of Zoning Appeals would specifically be looking at vehicular and pedestrian safety, environmental factors, aesthetics, public safety, nuisance conditions, concentration of similar uses. Is the proposal in character and compatible with adjacent land uses, and is the proposal, will it adversely affect the public interest? The Board of Zoning Appeals may also prescribe appropriate conditions and safeguards, hours of operation, landscaping, screening activities, et cetera.
I would like to ask a follow-up question to John's. What other uses besides residential and a high school fit within the RS2 zoning? It's not, the table of uses isn't in the book this time, and I just thought maybe you can, for us in the crowd, we'll share that.
It's very limited, RS2, basically residential, of course, and you get into some institutional uses as far as governmental uses, library, fire station, police departments, in certain instances, generally you're looking at a residential district. Any use that would require potential, a higher intensity of activity would go to the Board of Zoning Appeals generally as a special exception, but it's really specifically designed for residential with some institutional uses built in.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Thank you.
Thank you. I believe, I think what we'll do is we'll have people come up who are behind the fields first, and then we'll have people come up who are objecting to it tonight. So the, the ones who signed up, who would like to speak in favor of this, please step forward.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, my name is Michael Burkett, and I'm a president of the Athletic Booster Club, and I've got two comments to kind of make. One is about perspective. Last week I was charged with the task of making sure we advertised this enough to our feeder schools as well as our own students at Drear, and in doing so, we, I discovered that there are 4,000 students. Or our feeder schools in any given year, 4,000 students. So in any cycle, there's 4,000 students coming through. Now, when you think about that, research shows that 75% of these students are going to come back to the cities where they graduated high school from, once they finish their education. Research says 75% are going to come back. So the question is, if you're looking at a public policy matter or a long-term investment, then allowing us this first step so we can go have the conversation with the Board of Zoning Appeals is important so we can give these kids and the kids who follow them the same educational experience, the same high school experience that their peers had, because the current neighborhood that's, that objects to this is the same neighborhood that touts Drear as a benefit of their neighborhood. It's a good school, and if you sell a house in the Heathwood neighborhood, your kids can go to Flora or they can go to Drear. It's the same people who in 10 years are going to be complaining when the enrollment is down at Drear because families have chosen to live elsewhere because their kids can't get the same experience. I also want to note that Hammond is the only other school in our attendance zone. Hammond is a zone residential. I live two cul-de-sacs over from Hammond. It's good enough for my neighborhood, we're good neighbors to them, they're good neighbors to us. So if it's good enough for my neighborhood to place that school in a residential, it seems it should be good enough for, for Drear to be residential. Again, all of these concerns about usage and design, that's a conversation for, for the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Commissioners, thank you for your time this night. My name is Vance Strickland, I am a 1987 graduate of Drear, and I have two children that are here that attend Drear, and I have another one that'll be there next year. None of them will use any of the facilities that we're talking about, but I believe it is important for them and their peers to have comparable facilities to those of the other children that are in Richland District 1, and this is the first step. There's a lot of questions, a lot of details that'll be answered, and we try to do that, but this is the first step. Without the rezoning, we don't get to go to the next step to talk about the details that some of you have asked about. I have listened patiently and quietly to a number of concerns raised by the neighborhoods around Drear, and one of the things I was asked to do tonight was to address some of the concerns raised by the neighbors. I'm going to try to do that very succinctly, because simply a lot of the things that are being said are not true. First, there's this notion that somehow there's a contract that limits what Drear can do. There is no contract. The first thing you need to know is there's a case, Sinkler versus County of Charleston, that pretty much makes this PUD illegal. My guess is, a lot of you already know that and have emails from the legislative or the legal staff that have let you know that this case that was decided back in 2010 makes it very clear that the statute requires mixed use, specifically Section 6-29-720 and 6-29-740 require mixed use. Drear is not a mixed use. There's not a commercial building next to a house, there's not a house on that property, there's not a business on that property. It is one property, it is one entity, it is a school. Therefore, we are confident that the PUD is illegal. My guess is, once again, you already know that. Even in the event the PUD is not illegal, the PUD that was negotiated back in 2003 does not say that it can't be changed. There's specific language in the PUD that does allow for change to the PUD. The idea that you would build a school and never have any room to make any improvements is absurd, and I would hope that all of you are smart enough and realize that no one ever intended this to be one building and facility that would never grow and never improve. And clearly, the PUD did allow for that, but even if it didn't, it doesn't matter because it's illegal. Once again, talk to your lawyers, they're going to tell you that. And by the way, I'm not speaking as a lawyer, but I am one.
Your time is up. There's no more time. We're trying to limit the time, two minutes.
All right, I would like to simply say, the notice requirements have been going on for years, and I would point out that this has been going on for years, and any notion that the neighbors haven't known about this and hasn't been discussed is not true.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Matthew Campbell. I play Drear sports, two varsity sports, baseball and football. I've been on the football team for four years now, and we practice every day back on that outfield, whether it's wet, rainy, whatever, it's, it's, it's practice, but we've always been behind. We've been behind the eight ball, Chapin, Flora, bigger teams, bigger schools, but because we're in this area, we, we get the short stick, and that really hurts us in what we need to be doing and practicing and getting better and whatever else. But with this new facility that we could possibly have, it will help us tremendously in not varsity sports, but our younger kids that will be coming through there and be getting the better opportunity for the future. And the future is always brighter, and we need that to be able to keep being competitive in what we do in sports and anything else. And with the tennis courts and everything else that's going in there, this is just going to help our school and be better for our future and the kids that are coming through. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Thymia Bowles, and I'm a sophomore at Drear, and this is my third year as part of the tennis team, and it is really hard for us to go through our tennis life when we have to go to different facilities to practice and get kicked off during practice and during matches, and that also puts us behind as well. And we can all, like, with this movement, we can all get together and we can be a better tennis team, and we can train better tennis teams to come even after I graduate.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, and I would like to say I thank you for the opportunity to stand before you this afternoon. My name is Sheila Myers. I have a son who's a junior attending Drear High School. No, he does not play football, he's, he's not a tennis player, he is a basketball player, and the facilities that he will be playing in are excellent facilities. However, we are one Drear, we are one family, so therefore, I'm here to represent the needs of all of our students and athletes. You know, I don't believe that fairness is means equal, but I do believe that justice is for all. AC Flora will have the new facilities, Columbia High will have the new facilities, Keenan will have the new facilities, Lower Richland will have the new facilities, and all the other schools, high schools that are within Richland 1 School District. So my question is, why not Drear? Look around you, look at all of these young people in here. These are our future, they're our future, as a matter of fact, they are our right now. Why are we going to deny our kids in Drear? Why are we going to deny our kids in Dreer the same opportunities, the same facilities that other schools and other students in our district have and our students will not have? Is that right? Is that just? No, I don't think so. Again, justice is for all, and we owe our students justice. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Liz Dalzell. I'm a Dreer parent and also the president of the Hand Middle School Booster Club. I'm here with two hats today. One is the legal side of things. The PUD, as Mr. Strickland mentioned, is clearly illegal. There's a case called Sinclair versus County of Charleston where the court in, the Supreme Court in 2010 clearly held that the use of a zoning technique such as a PUD violates the Enabling Act of 1994 if you simply use the technique but fail to adhere to the requirements of the technique. As Vance aptly stated, the requirements of a PUD, as you all know much better than I do, require a mixed use involving residential and commercial structures, common use areas, open spaces, and et cetera. We're involved with a school here. Other schools are zoned residential. Dreer was zoned as a residential structure back in 2003 when this PUD was negotiated. That was 13 years ago, and it's time to change to do the right thing for our students. I can also speak as a parent. I have two boys who are athletes. We have lost several very talented athletes over the last couple of years to private schools and schools that offer better facilities and, to be honest, just a better-looking package with their sports. We are always looked at as second-class citizens despite the fact that our students work just as hard or harder in their athletics and other areas. So to that effect, I would argue that it's time for a change, and it's, the time is now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening to the distinguished members of the city council. My name is Bobby Dan McGlohorne, and I'm a football coach and classroom teacher at Dreer High School. We come to you today to ask you to approve the zoning change at Dreer High School for the following reasons. To not have these athletic facilities means that for athletes, coaches, every contest is an away contest. This is a real hardship for athletes, coaches, as well as their families. Home athletic contests are a source of pride for everyone involved in the school community. Number two, we will be at a competitive disadvantage with the other schools in the Class 4A region, Chapin, A.C. Flora, and Lower Richland. Two of those schools are rich as one. Schools and students and families may consider transferring to those schools instead of coming to Dreer if the zoning is not changed. The last reason that we want to touch on is the fact that if you don't approve this, you're basically telling the Dreer High School community that we're not a valued member of the neighborhood. Why are our student athletes, coaches, and families worth less than the other groups that we compete against? Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Chris Crabtree, and I am a senior at Dreer High School. I don't know any of the political aspects or legal aspects of the rezoning, but I can give you the students' perspective. I played football for all four years, and I'm the third and final son of the Crabtree family who's played football at Dreer. And in the past couple of months, I've had the wondrous joy of filling out college applications. And on almost every single app, there is a question or an essay about a leadership experience or extracurricular that has defined you as a person. And for every single one of them, I wrote about football. There's nothing in my life that has affected me the ways that football has. It's made me a better leader, a better person, a better worker, and it's given me friends and family that I'll always have. And as we've all talked about, how we have students and athletes leaving to go to other schools. I've looked over those 12 years of my family playing, and I've seen the team slowly gotten smaller and smaller. I think this year we had around 32 players, which is very small for a varsity football team. And I'm worried that as other teams and other schools get better facilities and we stay the same, that we will eventually lose all of our players. And all the future kids who attend Dreer won't have the same opportunities that I have and build the same memories that I've had as a high school student. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Maxwell Ward. I'm a junior at Dreer High School, and I've played football this year. I've played football, football for the past three years, and I've felt unfairly treated as far as where we have traveled and the places that we've gone to play. One thing that I've known on my life is that life may or may not be fair, but it's not unfair, and everyone deserves an equal opportunity to reap what they sow, and it's important for what they have. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Charles Reed, and I just want to make one simple point for you today. I went to seven different meetings with different neighborhoods about this process, and we heard many concerns. One of the concerns that I heard repeatedly was that when certain members of the neighborhood moved in, Dreer didn't have these athletic facilities. That Dreer didn't have a practice field for soccer and football. That Dreer didn't have a lighted tennis courts. Dreer didn't. I want to point out to you this. Dreer has been on that corner since 1938. You look at aerial photos from the 1940s, there are just a couple of houses anywhere near that school. Just a couple. And I know that for a fact, not just in the aerial photos, but from speaking to my uncle who was president of student body in the 1940s. He lived over on Hayward Street in Shandon, and he had to cross a field, a pasture, that had a bull in it, and he had to avoid the bull every day going to school. Okay? Dreer has been there for a long time, and I respect the people that live in that neighborhood. I have many friends in that neighborhood. Many friends. But things change. It's not 1938. It's not 2003. It's 2016. Dreer needs to change. We can't live in the past. We have to live in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Steve Ostermiller. We moved here this summer from living abroad, and one of the reasons why we came here and chose to work at the University of South Carolina is because of the community, because of the excellent reputation that Hand and Dreer have. I have two daughters that are now at Hand, they'll be at Dreer soon. Tennis is very important to us. We're a tennis family, and we're looking forward to our kids playing on the Dreer tennis team. And as the young lady spoke earlier, the tennis team doesn't play at Dreer, they have to play at a park miles away where they're bussed in and they sometimes get kicked off. And this is a huge impact on kids' ability to play tennis. And I can say, it might not sound like a big deal, but I think that we'll consider, reconsider even going to Dreer if the situation continues. I can also say that I think that the university will have difficulties recruiting if Dreer, the flagship Central Columbia school, has such substandard athletic facilities. Also, I want to mention that there is a real dearth of publicly available tennis courts in Central Columbia. I've tried on evenings and weekends to get courts at the Columbia Tennis Center off Pickens. It's very difficult. And I think that this would actually be an upgrade for the community to have a number of high-quality tennis courts available when the school's not using them. So there's two sides to this. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to stop for just a second and let those who are not in, okay, one more, not in favor have a...
Thank you. My name is Beatrice King, and I am on the Richland 1 School Board. I guess I am the representative from, from the school district talking about this issue. First of all, I think that our young people deserve a round of applause. Thank you. Public speaking is probably one of the, fear number one even before death. So when you have young people getting up to come and speak before an assembly like yours and other people, it's tremendously, it shows tremendously the skills that they have and the dedication that they have. What I would like to say is that Richland 1 has 23,000 students. We are a very unique, unique district because we are urban, suburban, and rural. A lot of our schools are within the Columbia city limits. Our two largest high schools, one of our largest high... development opportunity. And because we have, we are in the city, Dreer is limited, we're really asking you to consider this zoning change. It is indeed the fact that when families move into new areas, they're looking for schools, and they're not just looking at academics, they're also looking at the total package. And we are in the district looking to redo all of our athletic facilities. A disadvantage for some of our schools... ...our families, our downtown families, and...
Now I would like to let those who are not in favor of this item to come forward, please. Oh, yes, I'll come back. I just felt like we're going to let both sides...
My name is Cravens Ravenel. Does that work? That's working now? This is working now?
Yeah.
I think.
We'll try it.
All right. I've heard a lot about what's going to be, but we know what is. And it's up here over our head, and I have noted in two meetings that I've been to, the people who are proposing the change, for whatever reason, refuse to show me where the lights are going to be, where the stadium is going to be, is it going to be a stadium? We've got to understand that there are people who, I, I'm not one, because I don't live that close to them, but I do know people who live very close, adjacent to where this construction is going to go. And if you read the information that is handed out by the proponents of this, they will not even take a stand on what's going to be there. It might be this, it might be that. Will there be lights there? We don't know. I think at a minimum, they need to put out, hire one of their people who are there, have employed to present this, to show us what it's going to look like. There are people that I know that live very close to there whose lives, lives are going to be interfered with. Now, the question is, at some point in time, maybe the, the benefit outweighs the other people's desires. But I think those young men and women that I've seen up here today, I don't think their lives have been markedly damaged by the fact that they don't have enough lights and that they have to get in a bus and go to where they've been going. Now, I went to Dreer High School and graduated in 1956. I taught at Hand Junior High School for a couple of years. In fact, I taught with the father of the athletic director at, at Dreer High School. And a great man he was.
I've got to call the time.
All right. Well, and I'm, I'm going to do that, but I'm just saying that Dreer High School, this is from the 2006, Dreer High School's football and soccer teams play at Memorial Stadium located across the street from Columbia Owens Downtown Airport. Adjacent to the Memorial Stadium are newly-built baseball, softball, new track, field pitch. All of those things are available. It is not the end of the world if this does not happen.
Thank you. Everyone, please watch the time as we have a lot of people here tonight.
Mr. Commissioner, Jeff Rucker. I live on Azure Road directly across from Dreer. I'm also a 1987 graduate of Dreer with Mr. Strickland. Two, two couple of points that I want to make. First is, I think that the people who've said that Sinclair is applicable here are misunderstanding that case. You have to look back when the PUD was put on the property, and it was multiple different types of zone, and the PUD made it so that you could actually build the school in that location. I also submit to you that if you look at the Plan Columbia document, you will see that Dreer is the photographic example of a special district. When we look at neighborhoods, neighborhoods are the most important thing according to the plan in Columbia. And it says that we have to build or have infill development that is within the fabric of the existing architecture and neighborhoods. That we have a plan that defines the context, character, and quality of built places by first establishing the existing context in order to protect it. The type of infill development will use up a substantial portion of that green space. And it was said in 2003 that, that, that green space was not going to be developed. And in 2006, Richland County School District 1's vice chairman said that the site is too small for any type of athletic field. The green spaces were proposed at that time and since then to have remained undeveloped and left as grass field. In closing, just please consider that we're the planning commission to support removing the PUDC zone, it would effectively abandon the innovative design of how that school looks so cosmopolitan and urban from Millwood and blend seamlessly into the neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Susan Fulmer. I live on Princeton Street directly behind Dreer. And my husband and I are very concerned about the plans. We have a two-year-old son. We moved to the neighborhood a year ago specifically because we were interested in Dreer. We want our son to be able to go there. We also want him to be safe. So as you mentioned earlier, we're concerned about traffic. We're, we like to be able to walk with him. We want him to be able to ride his bike around the neighborhood. I used to live on a street that was extremely busy. It was a cut-through. But Princeton Street is a quiet street, and it's one of the things we love about the neighborhood. So, so we're concerned about the traffic that this plan will bring to the neighborhood. We're concerned about the lights. We're concerned about the lack of parking in the neighborhood. As many people have mentioned, it's an old neighborhood. Our house was built in 1923. We have a shared driveway. There's not space for me and my husband to both park. We park on the street. I can't imagine that there's going to be enough parking in this plan that is not going to impact the neighbors immediately around, and that's going to limit what people can do and how people can get around within the neighborhood itself. Additionally, I'd just like to say that I've always been very involved in neighborhood association where I used to live, and having moved here, I've started getting involved as well. But the assertion that the neighbors have been involved and told about this every step of the way is simply not true. I found out about this meeting tonight through a Facebook post that somebody took a picture of a letter that someone supposedly from Dreer sent to, sent home to a parent that was taken a picture of and posted, and that's how I learned about this. There was no discussion with the neighborhood specifically at our meetings. I think there was a meeting a couple of months ago that they were going to speak about some of the... I think there was a meeting a couple of months ago that they were going to speak about something, But it was immediately scrapped and told that it was gonna be looked at later. And so, you know, I think that there's a lot of Drear representation here, and that's wonderful. But I'm not sure that the neighbors who are immediately gonna be affected by this have really been notified of what's going on.
Thank you.
My name is Jim Gregory, and I live on Adjour, directly across the street from Drear. I'm not opposed to Drear having a wonderful facility. This is just not the place to put it. It will have adverse effect on the neighborhood as far as traffic, noise, and just trash on the street which I go over and pick up. This is not the place to put whatever kind of facility you deserve. That is a given. Need it, put it somewhere else. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mickey Maulin. I live at 827 Albion Road. We're one block east of your planned development. We're reasonable people. This is not a villagers with torches and pitchforks out looking to slay a monster. We are reasonable. We bought into that area based on an assertion by Drear when they negotiated that PUD. It was their idea in 2003 that they would protect the residential nature of our neighborhood. That's your job, to preserve and protect our neighborhood. This doesn't do it. You bring in one assessor, one tax assessor, one real estate appraiser, and let them tell you what the price Is gonna happen to that property once you put a multiplex in there with 60 or 70-foot lights, public address systems, 1,000-seat stadium. I'm not talking only about an investment of money. I'm talking about an investment of families and of life in that neighborhood. And this will seriously affect the quality of a residential neighborhood. They should be stopped from denying the legality of that PUD and try to change it because we relied on that. And people in that neighborhood continually work on their homes to upgrade, to keep them a value up. People buy into that neighborhood because of the character of it. And for you not to protect that character would be a failure of your job. I would like to see Drear have good facilities too. But you may be interested to know, the street I live on, one block over, we're not even zoned for Drear. In closing, I would just say, as John said before me, this is not the place Because it is contiguous to the residential areas. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Mary Baskin Waters with the Historic Heathwood Neighborhood Association. And I'd like to take up for the neighborhoods. While we are always very proud of our neighbor Drear and its students, I am a former Drear parent and possibly a former, I mean, a soon-to-be grandmother of a Drear student. And so, we are part of the Drear family. But I do want it understood that we are just trying to take up for our neighborhoods. Our neighborhood goes back to 1913 when it was purchased by Heath Manning, and he built his family home there. And so, we do go way back. And we have lived in this neighborhood for 40 years, my husband Sam and I have. But we have had three incidences that has happened with Richland District One and the parents of Drear. One, we were rezoned away from Drear, out of our neighborhood. So, our son went to Drear and our daughter went to Flora. Two, we had the PUD of 2003, and we lost, if you look at the map on the left-hand side, We lost a community, Princeton Street, to Drear High School. And now, we are faced with this environmental change to our neighborhood. But what our concern is, while we want everything for our students, We're concerned that we just don't have the room for this expansion. And we are concerned about the loss of the environmental quality in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Question for staff. Has there been any meetings between The people for it and the neighborhood, or both sides, have they met and discussed this at all? Maybe for the applicant. Have you met with the
Hello?
I think it's working.
Is it working? I'll speak.
I just wondered if you, if you all have met and discussed this prior to coming in here.
Many, many times. It's working now, I think. So, I know that we've attended seven. I know the parent groups have also attended additional meetings. I would guess over a dozen meetings have taken place. I would also like to clear up some of the misunderstanding about the specifics of the plan. Again, many of these issues have been vetted in great detail and presented. And I have a plan that I promised was in my back pocket that I will distribute so you can see it. And emphasize that a lot of the comments that I think we're hearing are about a misunderstanding of the intent of this plan. I mentioned earlier, the vast majority of what we are doing is in the ground plane. So, we're placing grass with artificial turf. This is not about building a football stadium. This is not about increasing traffic. This is not about environmental problems. There is a question about lighting. We're willing to vet that in great detail. But I would like to distribute this, just so you understand that there has, there is specificity to where those light poles are proposed in this plan.
That would probably be helpful for all of us.
So, again, we were just told this could confuse matters because this is about the rezoning and not about sat plan approval. But we're happy to share this information. And again, I don't know if you guys want to add to the community input piece. But we've been hard at work for months on that.
River Bluff, Westwood, Blythewood, it is.
Right.
But that seems like a gem. It seems like something that we could, that the school district could really, really do something special with and make it a showpiece.
There are plans to do that. So, Raymond will tell you.
Good afternoon. I'm Raymond Perkins, Director of Facilities for the District. To speak to your specific question, yes, we are improving Memorial Stadium along with Bolden. The stadium at Keenan will be a new one, and we will be improving the stadium at Lower Richland. So, we're gonna improve the existing stadiums that we have. Each stadium will have a set number of schools that will compete on those particular sites, In particular at Memorial, AC4, and Drear will be sharing that site. We have the same thing that is set up for the other stadiums. So, we will be improving those. And some details that you'll see, we'll be building up a very large scoreboard with videos, just like you see at the River Bluff. We will have 5,000 seats. We will also improve the restrooms and canteens. So, we have a number of improvements. Those schools will also, I mean, those stadiums will also receive the sports turf that we're putting in at all the high schools. So.
Thank you.
Yes, I was just answering a question specifically of what we're doing at Memorial. But we are improving Columbia High School, just like we're doing here at Drear. We're doing the same thing at Eau Claire High School and then AC4.
Thank you.
Just want to clarify the drawing that has been distributed. So, what you see as light green represents the existing grass. What you see as dark green represents the two athletic fields. So, again, that's the limits of the sports turf. The only thing that is proposed that is outside of the ground plane there are some small bleachers, Again, mainly for JV games. The seating capacity of that is a maximum of 900 seats. Memorial Stadium is 5,000 seats, to give you an idea of scale. We're showing four light poles with high-performance lighting designed to be lighting just the field So that there's minimal light spillage. And a little bit of additional parking where the old tennis courts were. That's the sum total of the plan. Plus, a few small additional restrooms and a little restroom building that you also see in the plan next to the school.
Thank you. Other people who would like to come forward, please.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is John Montague. I live at 818 Adjour Road, directly across the street from the proposed facilities at Drear. If you look at the diagram on the board up there, my home is directly across Adjour Road From the easternmost corner of the outline of the property. If you look at the plan of the field they plan to put in, It's oriented in such a way that if there's a sound system, which is being proposed, It would be focused directly at my front door. If you look at where the lights are proposed to be, If they're high enough to illuminate the field, they will shine directly in the eyes of people sitting at my dining room table on the second floor of my home. I invite you all, please, come to my home. There is a broad staircase going to the second floor entrance, which is the main entrance to my house. And I ask that you come up and sit and look out onto where they plan to put these facilities And ask you, would you want them in your front door? I don't. I don't want the noise. I don't want the light. I don't want the extra traffic. I don't want to see more of what we get when there are basketball games with bust-in students And the people who drive to come to those events and then break glass bottles on my front lawn. It happens every single time. We don't need to change the nature of a very calm, quiet, restful residential neighborhood. Thank you very much. I ask you to reject any opportunity to change what exists today.
Thank you.
Chairman, my name is Sam Waters. I'm co-president of the Heathwood Neighborhood Association, Historic Heathwood. I want to clarify a couple of things in my two minutes. You've heard from Vance, you've heard from Mike, you've heard from Charles. They talk about all the meetings they attended in our neighborhood. Sir, our neighborhood is not in the Drear Zone. The district is ingenuous to come in here and pretend that it has met with our neighborhood. We're neighborhood presidents. We were never contacted by the district, period, not at all. And we have learned about this solely because a Drear parent called us August 25th When we were on the road to Charleston, saying there was a meeting that night at Drear. We had people try to go to that. It was a Drear Booster Club executive meeting, and they kicked them out, wouldn't let them in. Later on, Mr. Quackenbush set up a meeting at Drear High School, but he couldn't make it. And when we got there, the doors were locked. The liaison didn't know there was a meeting. The principal, Ms. Stickelbauer, had already left and ultimately joined by telephone. It was a horrible, horrible experience. But friends, that is the way this district has carried out this operation. We have been treated that way before. And this is not about wants. They haven't, no one's expressed a real need here. There are a lot of wants. But Drear has existed since 1938. To answer Charles Reed's question, if there were only two houses there in 1940, Then why didn't Drear expand back then? Drear had a chance to relocate in 2003, did not. Now, they want to shoehorn in a field that obviously is going to change the nature of our area. And I wouldn't doubt it if they didn't try to open a gate on Adjour Road, which we insisted had to be closed off. Just want to clarify some of those points.
Thank you.
And thank you for your time.
Just because I was called out on that, I would say that
Well, it's not a debate.
There have been multiple meetings.
Hey, let's keep it in order, please.
Hi, my name is Sheila McCoy. I live at 824 Adjour Road, which is
Please be quiet so we can hear the speaker.
Right across the way. It's unfortunate that this is broken into who's he said, she said. I can only say that I was never invited to a meeting. My wife and I have lived there since 1992. We are fortunate to live next to Mrs. Mary White Player, who was a teacher at Drear. All of our three students went to Drear. My youngest daughter was a scholarship athlete from Drear, playing soccer. Was in state championships at the time. She did not have a facility like this. She did quite well. Yes, it was a pain as a parent to go to the practices, but we did it. We voted for the first bond by Richland One to keep Drear because we believe in the academics first. Drear has been a wonderful academic school. I appreciate these young athletes and what they go through. I was myself an athlete. But my two children, both were athletes at Drear, they did quite well. This is not what they agreed to in the PUD. And it's unfortunate that they have decided to go against their word. And I do not know the law. I don't argue the law. I'll leave that up to the lawyers. But I ask you, would you want this in your backyard? It will be in my front yard each and ever morning and afternoon. Appreciate your time. Thank you for this moment.
Thank you.
Commissioners, hi. My name is Fred Easley. I'm the president of the Melrose Neighborhood Association. We are directly affected by the plans that Drear is making. And I have just a statement I'd read. It says that we have over 700 residences located here in downtown Columbia. The houses are not represented on the plan that you have in front of you with the green. But one of my neighbors is most directly affected by that, and I'll get to it. We are a historic preservation district, and we are recognized by the City of Columbia As Melrose Heights Oak Lawn Architectural Conservation District, and we were first recognized in 2003. Our boundaries are Millwood Avenue to the south, Daly, Michigan, Princeton, Maiden Lane to the east, Trenton Road, Gervais Street to the north, and Wood Road to the west. We are immediately adjacent to Drear High School. Melrose Neighborhood Association invited speakers to discuss the Drear changes. We had an informational meeting with Drear Boosters Club in September of this year. No one from Richland County School District One came to that meeting. It was a good meeting. They did provide us with some information. The issue we ran into is unfortunately, the members from the Booster Club couldn't commit to anything. They were just there to relay information, and they couldn't answer questions. We met again in October and discussed the Drear changes again. We were gonna have a meeting, and the Booster Club folks came and they brought some additional information and did that stuff in October. Our neighborhood voted, and we voted overwhelmingly, over 90%, In opposition to any zoning changes to the Drear property, based on what we had been through before back in 2003. The reason for that is simple. You can see that the field is shoehorned in there. The individual that lives right there in the corner property, his name is Michael Roberts, he can't be here tonight. He's a United States soldier. He flies helicopters. He's on a mission. His wife lives there with their child. That basketball goal is gonna be 20 feet from their house. And there have been no plans, anything discussed to where that would be taken care of. So, and I've spoken with Raymond Perkins to discuss alternate locations, and I've attempted to talk with the Booster Club representatives. I talked with Ms. Stickelbauer, and she was going to email them so that we could meet. But our three opposition, proposed changes will have a substantial adverse effect on vehicular traffic in our neighborhood. Because honestly, if you're gonna put 900 things in there that's not currently there, obviously, you're gonna have 900 more people show up. All right, proposed changes will have a substantial
It's time is up. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Good evening. My name is Hamilton Osborne. I'm a 1961 graduate of Drear High School. I currently live at 10 Heathwood Circle, two blocks east of the Drear campus. I'm here in support of the existing PUD and in opposition to the proposed rezoning change. When the PUD was adopted in 2003, I was a member of When the PUD was adopted in 2003, I was a member of Columbia City Council, and I voted in support of the PUD because it represented a very carefully negotiated and detailed plan and agreement between the surrounding neighborhoods and the school district. Before deciding to rebuild Dreher as it currently exists, the school district considered moving Dreher to a different location, never identified, but which would have provided much more space. Some people supported that option, some people opposed it. For whatever reason, the district decided to keep Dreher where it was, but with the clear understanding that making that decision meant that Dreher was going to be constrained in the future in terms of the land it had or surrounding and available to its use. That's why the PUD was necessary. And the PUD contains a great deal of detailed operating rules and regulations and agreements, all of which will be swept away if a new rezoning is adopted. Nothing will be preserved. And the proponents of the rezoning have done nothing to offer the neighborhood some protection that currently exists in those provisions of the PUD. Now, I've heard the PUD attacked here tonight as being allegedly illegal. I'm going to defer to my neighbor Jeff Brooker, although I'm a lawyer, I haven't studied the issue, and I'm going to defer to Jeff Brooker, who has studied it and who has told me that the people who claim that the PUD is illegal are erroneous. But let me just say this, that argument has no place before this commission, because zoning ordinances, like all ordinances, are presumed to be lawful unless and until declared unlawful in a court of competent jurisdiction. This commission has no power to decide that an existing zoning ordinance is unlawful, and it cannot base a decision on any such assumption. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I'll be brief. My name is Foster Hazelton, and I live on Adger Road right next to Dreher. I'm also a 1996 graduate of Dreher. As I submitted a letter to the commission, if you recall, I think I have 16 direct family members in my family. We're all proud Dreher alums. And so this is not, you know, the neighborhood versus Dreher's. I incorporate my reference, so many of my neighbors' comments about whatever, all they've discussed, but one thing, and I just want to reiterate, for Michael Roberts and my neighbor who I haven't been able to meet yet, but I bought my home on August 22nd with specific reason that I wanted my two young boys to be able to go to Dreher like I was able to go to Dreher. I lived in the walk zone and chose to go to Dreher for Flora, and I wanted them to have that opportunity because of the wonderful experience I got at Dreher. I did not know about this. Had I known about this, I will tell you, I would not have bought that home. Several other of my neighbors have bought homes within this last calendar year, and they were not aware of it, nor were their realtors. So I do want to bring that point up, that I would not have bought my home if I had known this was in the works. But I have an 18-month-old and a 2-month-old, and so I share the same concerns of my neighbors about the noise, the traffic, the lighting. The lights, based on what that little sketch shows, would be going directly into my house, and the press box, which I believe has been put on the table, would be looking directly into my backyard, into my home, into my son's home. And so there is a human element here, because there are many children in this neighborhood that want to go to Dreher, and they would be affected. And the last thing I'll say is, there are a lot of senior citizens. My grandmother lives on Adger Road, my cousin lives on Devera, who's 91. They can't be here tonight, and I think that community is underrepresented. We've seen no light study, we've seen no noise study, we've seen nothing. I just implore you to take that into consideration. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name's Rusty Miller. Good evening, thank you, commissioners. I don't want to repeat what's been said. I do want to make one comment and one observation. I think it's great that the students and the parents are here, so they can see how the world operates, and how governments, and how neighborhoods, and how people can come together and make decisions. And it would have been great had we had that opportunity, but this is not a collaboration between the neighborhood and the school district. The plan was put in place and then presented to the neighborhood well into the planning process. So they had drawings, they had the specifications that they had. The neighborhood meetings that I've been in, we have made some suggestions, some recommendations, and asked for changes, and none of those have been reflected in any of the plans. The plans are the same as they were when they were first shown to us. And I really, I really would like to encourage the district to start over again and collaborate with the neighbors. Because as I look around, most of the students and parents that I see, I don't recognize as living in the neighborhood. Some of them may, and so it doesn't impact them. It'll impact them for three years, four years, maybe 10 years, but as you've heard, most of the residents here are longer-term residents. The other point I'd like to make is that I have a real problem in hearing about the emphasis on athletics versus academics. When my family moved to Columbia 20 years ago, we moved to Richland District Two because the academics were far superior. And having moved a couple of times, we knew that was important. Athletics weren't a consideration. Most high school athletes will not make a living in their athletic endeavors, but they will in their academic endeavors. So although I know the monies are a little bit different, I would encourage the $5 million that we've been told this will cost be put into academics at Dreher, and then people will want to come. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'd like to, I'd like to maybe limit this to two more people on each side talking, as I think we've, we understand the positions of both sides, so if we can do that-
Absolutely, and I'll try to add something new and rehash old ground. My name is David Adams. I am actually the tax collector for Richland County, so I'm used to not being liked, even though I'd like to be liked more. And so I understand how all of this works and what you were looking at. My wife was on Richland One School Board for the last three years, and for the last two years, she has been actually working on this and attending multiple meetings about this. Now, I can't speak to what happened with the Heathwood neighborhood, how they were or were not notified, so I'm not going to. I'm just going to say that as a part of the record for School District One, they have had multiple and numerous meetings on this, time after time. The second thing I'd like to say is that if you do want a community school, the hours don't end at 3:30. It's part of the community all day long. You're supporting after-school activities just as much as you're supporting in-school activities and academics, because they are enrichment that do last a lifetime. I was an all-state basketball player at Ermo. I still consider the Ermo basketball coach as one of my mentors and father figures who I still call on when I have problems today. So please don't tell me that athletics are not as important as academics in some degree. So for those reasons, for those reasons, because a community school is a community school all day long, I urge you to let this go to the next step. If there are negotiations that have to happen beyond this point, let's get to the next point. Let's not stop it tonight. Thank you.
Hi, my name is David Shea. I'm a 20-year Shannon resident, I have children at Rosewood, Hand, eventually be at Dreher. Appreciate what Mr. Adams just said. Want to add something else that hasn't, that I don't think has been focused on enough tonight? And I would challenge everyone in this room, and I hope we all agree, frankly, with some of the comments, I'm not sure if we all do, is to consider the safety of our children. We heard it from the students here, we heard it about the tennis team. Every minute that these children are off-campus is a risk to them. The tennis team has no home, the JV students, they don't have driver's licenses, they have to, they have to rely on others. The safety of our children should be a paramount concern. This is a school. Imagine if the children at this school started going, I don't want to send my kids to private school, but if the school closed, imagine the opposition if we were here with Target asking to put the property right there? If we drive so many students away that we lose our community school? I live two blocks from Hand, Hand's a great community school. It's used all the time, on the weekends, by parents, by students, you know, off-time. But as far as these Dreher considerations and Dreher improvements, we need to allow it, as Mr. Adams said. Let's get to the next level, because the safety of our students should be a paramount concern, and I'm not hearing that tonight, but I think it needs to be factored in tremendously. It's the most important. Thank you.
Let's have two more people speak.
You have 10 more people signed up.
10 more?
I'll be fast.
Go ahead.
I just want to make sure you guys understand that we are using Memorial Stadium. We do use the facilities we have, but when you have, like, these boys were speaking, we have varsity boys, we have varsity girls, they're using those facilities. We're using those facilities every day. I have a daughter and a son, they're both soccer players. I have a straight A daughter, so she's academically and athletic. So we are looking at both. These kids are using that field anyway. It is a makeshift field. I pick my son up from it every day. It's not like, it's not being used, and it's not happening now anyway. We are using behind Dreher. We practice on it every day. We're out there all the time. It's just not a real field. It's a makeshift field, and it's the JV kids, the younger kids, it's those kids that are using that field. We are using Memorial Stadium all the time. We need the other field as well.
Thank you.
And I promise I won't take a minute. My name's Charles Appleby. I'm the past president of the Shannon Neighborhood Council. Our neighborhood is the one that is actually zoned for Dreher. The children in our neighborhood will be going to Dreher. I want to clarify two points that the opponents have said. First, that they never met with us. From the Shannon Neighborhood Council, they met with us twice, in detail, and showed us plans, so I find it hard to believe that they didn't also meet with the other surrounding neighborhoods. Second, it's a stadium.
Hold, please, hold all comments, let him speak.
Second, and more importantly, the opponents have said it's a stadium. As you notice from the drawings, it is a very small field with small stands. It is not a stadium. Again, our children in the Shannon neighborhood are the ones who are going to Dreher. We ask that you value the opportunities for our city's children over property values. Thank you.
Let's, no, we're going to let everyone speak. I think we have eight left, but let's hold the applause so we can keep this going, please.
My name's Will Thomas. I live right on Adger Road, which has basically become a drag strip, for those of you who know the city. I won't go into that too much, but what I will say is, there's a word here that maybe everybody in this room needs to learn, it's called trust. And what is trust? Trust is when somebody says something they're going to do, you trust it, that's what they're going to do. And what my understanding is, in 2003, this PUD was developed, and they said, "We will not build an athletic field here." That's what they said. Members of the school board even said, "The areas, the buffer zones around Dreher are going to be too small to build an athletic field." So people relied on that. People bought homes in the neighborhood, people who are going to live here for 20, 30, 40 years. And so when I hear today, "Well, it's only going to be 900-seat stadium," well, I look at the surrounding plan, looks like they got room for about 5,000 seats if they want to put them there, and who's to say they won't? Who's to say they're not going to switch varsity athletics there in a few years? We just heard someone say, "What you did in 2003 doesn't really matter anymore, because things have changed." Are we going to hear that in 10 years? People who live in this neighborhood, I don't think there are many people here who are proponents of this plan actually live in Heathwood or Melrose. There may be one or two. But for those of us who live here, we trusted what the district said back in 2003, and we would like them to keep their word. Thank you.
Please, let's try to hold the applause.
I'm Wade Mullins. I'm going to be brief. I live on Albion Road, which is one block east. I hesitate to stand up here before you. I am a huge proponent of high school sports, I'm a big football fan, I'm a big Dreher football fan. We would all, I think, love to see Dreher Athletics have the best facilities available. I think what you've heard is not where they're proposing to put it. And let me, before I make one additional comment along those lines, you guys, obviously, your job is to make planning, zoning decisions, okay? Your job is not, and I know you have many people come before you and say, "Not in my backyard." You hear that all the time. And your job is not to be, not to have your heartstrings pulled. You know, we, the school had the ability, and I will tell you, they issued robo-calls, they issued texts, they issued every manner possible to get people here tonight. The neighborhood has done everything they can to get people here. There are some people that can't be here, so hopefully you're going to listen, and I think Mr. Osborne, who has the history of this issue, is probably the most important person for you to listen to, in terms of the right decision to make. But hopefully, you're going to make the decision based on the issues that you're supposed to make the issues on, and not because this football team over here, which deserves everything that they want, comes to you and said that they would like to have a field. Now, what field are we talking about? We're talking about a JV football field. It's a stadium, okay? Now, I'm going to read the PUD, I'm going to read the language that everyone's referring to, to make sure that y'all know, and I'm sure you've read it. This is in the PUD. It says, "These," and this was after much debate, it says, "These fields will be for PE and practice only. Competition sports will be hosted on another site." That was, we went through the same process 10 years ago, and that was what was decided on. And what you heard today was, "Well, things have changed." What I would ask you, I haven't heard anybody say, "What? What has changed?" I hear at AC Flor, maybe they're beating us in sports. Well, that's not a sufficient reason for you guys to make a decision to undo this deal that was made 10 years ago at the table with the neighborhoods, and it was a deal that ought to be, that was meant to be lived within and ought to be lived with now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I have to run, I have a child at home. My name is Karen Campbell. I have one of the speakers tonight, I have two young boys, all coming through the system, actually, my other one's here too. They all play sports, they are all National Honor Society members, they, and even higher. We are so proud to be Dreher members, and we are completely respectful of Heathwood Neighborhood, because I have many friends and family there too. My point to you is tonight, if Donald Trump can be elected president, change can happen. For God's sake, this is, it is time. I'm not trying to be funny, but this is passionate, a passionate subject to me, and I will say, it's time for change. It's okay to adapt to change as long as we all listen to each other. We're willing to make a plan that works, we just need to be heard. And I will tell you, multiple meetings that I have sat in, nobody listens. They're hearing what they want to hear, they don't want to hear what we have to say. My final point is, my final point is, it was spoken out loud by a member in this room that he would buy city council's vote to make this go Heathwood's way. I will not stand for that.
John, is there, are we done? We have one more person.
I'm Billy Candy. I live at, I'm sorry, I got a little bit of cold. I live at 821 Albion, so, and just to, hate to belabor the point and reiterate what everybody else has said, but the lights, the traffic, the additional traffic, the sound system is going to be in my, will be in my backyard. So obviously, I'm opposed to this, and I will also like to say that I got zero notice from Dreher about this. I got notice from just the neighborhood talking about it. So, you know, if they sent notices, we didn't get them on our street, and we're one block and a half away. But, so, again, I'm opposed to it. I think the lights, the additional traffic on our streets, the parking is going to be negatively affect all of our properties. So thank you.
Thank you. If no one else wants to speak, first of all, I'd like to, before we discuss it and put it to a vote, I'd like to commend the young men for coming forward. I'd like to commend the people in favor. Young lady, I'm sorry, because I enjoyed listening to you. And I'd like to commend everyone with their views on the neighborhood. I'm sorry y'all couldn't get together prior to this and have a meeting that would be a little bit more substantial, so it's going to be in our hands to make that decision. Are there any more questions to staff, or would anyone want to question the applicant? Then I'm going to ask for a motion, please.
Before I make the motion, I want to thank everyone else, I want to thank everyone for coming too, and hats off to the young people coming here and speaking and getting up and speaking to everyone. I know that takes a lot of, a lot of courage. I know that takes a lot of, a lot of courage. You know, with that being said, with the lack of communication with the people that are in the surrounding area, that are so close, that especially a, a co-president that wasn't notified, you know, alarms me. I understand that this is a rezone issue and not a site plan review, which is what a lot of the issues are here, but with that being said, I know that we're going to be the first step in the process moving forward. And with that being said, I'm going to make the motion to deny the request, rezone the parcel PUDC to RS2.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Let's do a hand, what do we?
I'll do a roll call. Stern?
Aye.
Stigmeier?
Aye.
Tupper?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Cone?
Aye.
Waits?
Aye.
James? And Mr. Frost?
Motion passes. We, we have a meeting to continue, please.
Did we lose somebody?
Oh, I think Brian went to Russia. Oh. Maybe he left.
You can't make one.
You got another one there? Thank you, I'm sorry. I'll take it then, for sure.
I'll take another one, yeah, I'll probably just, I was, I was.
There we go.
What'd you say?
I said, "There we go."
Man, a deal is a deal.
Yeah.
Thank you. I've been sucking it down. I thought I was going to have to pull security up.
Thank you.
You see the kid with the blue tie on back there? The one that spoke last? I can't remember, I coached him in a little bit.
Oh, really? I, thank you. I don't need it.
We still got a meeting to go forward.
Did you see the last kid that talked?
No, not today.
I coached him.
Thank you, Ross.
Did our kids enjoy it now?
Oh, yeah?
Oh, what was his name? That woman's furious, but she'll have to get over it.
Who is?
The one that came over and said, "We got bought out by somebody."
This is a volunteer position.
Yeah, I knew it.
I think he needed to have one, can't help being a big fan of these.
I've got to ask everyone to leave or bring someone up here. We still have a meeting to continue? Thank you. Well, you can walk down the hall. We still have business to continue. Shall we go to our next item?
Feel sorry for the person who's hanging out for this one.
Sure. Your next item on the regular agenda for this evening is a zoning map amendment for 2211 Reed Street, which is a request for a minor amendment to the current PUD for cellular services to be located on that particular property.
Any questions to staff from the commission? Is the applicant here? We would have brought you forward if I knew it was going to be an hour.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman Jonathan Yates. I thought we had fights in Charleston, where I'm from. You guys got us beat. I saw it all tonight, but thank you, and thank you for your service. Before we get started, and due to the late hour, I will not be lengthy, but I did want to take the time to thank Brian Cook and his staff. I work for T-Mobile, representing them across the state, so we take planning and zoning departments as we find them, but you have an incredible staff here. Their, their help for us to get through the application, get this point, was phenomenal, and I thank them. I will say Brian is originally from Charleston, so that, you know, that could be part of it. What we are proposing tonight, and by we, my client T-Mobile, we have a deficit that we want to cover in the surrounding area, is what we call a capacity deficit. Your phone will work, you might get data out, but then you'll occasionally get a fast busy signal, or your data speeds will be severely impeded. To solve this problem, we used a technique that we use a lot in downtown Columbia, downtown Charleston, downtown Savannah, versus building a standalone tower, which can fill a room full of people. We searched, and right in the middle of our search area was an appropriate structure of about 100 feet tall. It was a rooftop. The rooftop in question is owned by the Housing Authority of Columbia. We appreciate them working with us on this request, and it is the Oak Reed High Rise. What we propose to do there is on three, what we call sectors, on top of the, the building's about 100 feet tall. In the center of the building, you can see sort of from that aerial, there's what we call the penthouse roof. There's no fancy penthouse there, it's just the, basically the top of the elevator shaft. On two sides of that, the eastern and southern side, we would initially place two antenna, they would be the Ericsson Air 32 and the Andrew LNX, and then if you go to the western side of the building, there's the top of the stairwell, we would place, place our third sector there. Why three sectors? We have to cover 360 degrees with our communication. Our base equipment will be placed on the western side of the rooftop, on an elevated steel platform, three feet off the roof, so it will not interfere with roof maintenance. The power and fiber to supply the site will run down the backside of the building in a conduit painted to match the building. The procedure for T-Mobile is about a 30-to-40-day installation. After that, T-Mobile only visits maybe four to five times a year for routine maintenance. These cell sites are all remotely controlled and monitored. What it does at the end of the day is it improves what we call the wireless infrastructure for that area. As you can see from the rooftops surrounding it, the rows, it's what we call a high-capacity area. You have a lot of folks living, working, and traveling through that area. We need to augment our ability to provide them the coverage what we promised them. We thank you, we're here for any all questions.
Any questions from the commission? Any questions for staff from the commission? Then I'm going to call for a motion. Do we have a second? A second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you, sir.
Item number 15 on your regular agenda is also a zoning map amendment, is to rezone 1,000, 2,000, 3,000, and 4,000 Pavilion Towers Circle and 5,000 Thurman Mall. It's a request to rezone from a planned unit development to a RG3 with DD overlay, and it currently does have the DD overlay. And the request for this is due to the fact that they're doing some remodeling, and 5,000 Thurman had been an office building, and it is being proposed that they want to convert that to residential uses, thus signifying the, the change from a PUD to a base zoning district.
Is the applicant, is the applicant here?
Yes.
Wes Lyles with Studio 2LR. You guys worn out yet?
Now, we would have called you forward too.
That's okay, I enjoyed the WWE action over here. In a nutshell, it's the four towers you see at the corner of Elmwood and Hugh G. as you drive into Columbia. Those four towers, we're not changing, they're apartments currently. The building in question, and the reason this has come up, is there's an office building of about 30,000 square feet, that's at the end of Pulaski or Thurman Drive. That's being proposed to be turned into 23 apartments, and the amenity areas for the apartments to be moved into that building. And the PUD required a, an office component to the PUD. We met with staff, Brian and Jonathan, about changing that. We could have changed the PUD, it was an easier route and a better route to go with the RG3, to rezone it with the PD overlay, which made the most sense for the, the new owners. And this building changed hands just last month, so, but that's what we're doing. Item number 16 is also us, that's the existing drive, it's called Pavilion Towers Drive, or Pavilion Tower Circle. Again, they're changing the name and rebranding the towers and the buildings to Vista Towers, and so that's the reason for that, item number 16 too. So I thought I'd just get that in while I was up here.
Can we do both?
Actually, item number 16 by state requirements has to have a public hearing, so we'll have to keep, you'll have to carry those as two separate items.
And that's fine, I just, while I was here and talking, I could get it out.
Any questions for the applicant? Any questions for staff? And I'm going to call for a motion.
I move, I move to approve item 15 as presented.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Passes. Now we'll go to 16.
Item 16, I'll just do it real quickly. Changing the name.
Item 16 is a street name change for a public hearing. It's to change Pavilion Tower Circle to Vista Tower Circle, and it is a public hearing, so after the applicant speaks, you will have to open that up.
Bring all those people back.
Is it taking place now?
You can have him present, but you need to have a public hearing after he presents.
What, what would we approve? The name change?
It's the name change, you're changing the name. All you're doing is changing the name of the street.
So we, is there any, anybody, is there anybody here who would like to speak? Okay, then can we get a motion? Do we do a motion to approve it? All right.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we change Pavilion Tower Circle to Vista Towers Drive.
Second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I think that's it, isn't it?
Yes, on your agenda, there was item number 17. Number 17, I'll just state for your information, you recall you made a motion to defer that until this meeting, so they could go to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Over at the Zoning Board of Appeals, they requested to have their item deferred, so they requested this one to be deferred. So assuming things proceed tomorrow, then you will see this one in January.
They want to pass it back to us.
What was that?
They want to pass it back to us.
Well, they were being, they knew you didn't want to hear that here until, so they request, they sent an email stating they were going to defer till January.
So moved. See everybody in 2017.